Praise for the pledge of allegiance, please.
Our pledge of allegiance to the letter of the United States of America and to the Republic of which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberties and justice for all.
We'll call please.
Kushner.
Here.
Osborne.
Here.
Latari.
Here.
Jones, not present. Euler.
Here. Rule of city council minutes, motion to approve regular city council meeting minutes dated May 12th, 2025.
Move to approve. So sorry, I beg your pardon, you get the next one.
Kushner.
Yeah.
Osborne.
Yes.
Latari.
Yes.
Euler.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Adoption of agenda.
Uh, yes, mayor and council, um, item seven point one, and request that you pull it from the agenda, the packet had kind of a developing item that we hope to provide you more information. I can report further on my city manager update, but it's uh, no longer an action item for your consideration.
Move to approve with uh, modification said.
Kushner. Kushner.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Latari.
Yes.
Euler.
Yes.
Thank you.
Right over. Proclamations. Is anyone here to receive any proclamation? Oh, I'm gonna.
Just take a reading.
Can I just read them from here?
I feel like.
Sure.
Good.
We have four proclamations. Juneteenth Day of Observance 2025 proclamation. Whereas on June 19th, 1865, almost 90 years after the country was first founded and more than two years after President Lincoln signed the Emancipation Proclamation, enslaved Americans in Galveston, Texas finally received word from Union soldiers that they were free from bondage. And whereas its first time citizens, black Americans came to commemorate Juneteenth with celebrations of new lives and traditions across the country known by many names as Jubilee Day, Freedom Day, and Liberation Day. And whereas since 2003, Juneteenth has been recognized by law in Missouri as Emancipation Day and dedicated by statute inscribed that Americans devote some part of the day to remember the proclamation that began the full realization for all people in the United States of the self-evident truth that all people are created equal. Whereas in 2021, President Biden declared June 19th as the Juneteenth Day of Observance across the nation to acknowledge and celebrate the end of the Civil War and the emancipation of black Americans. And whereas the citizens of Warrensburg are urged to recommit with purpose and resolve to the work of equity, equality, and justice for all. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Bruce D. Euler, Mayor, along with the Warrensburg City Council, do hereby proclaim June 19th, 2025 to be the Juneteenth Day of Observance in the city of Warrensburg, Missouri. In witness whereof, I herein to set my hand and seal this ninth day of June. LGBTQIA+ Pride Month, June 2025 proclamation. Whereas our nation was founded on the principle of equal rights for all people, but the fulfillment of this promise has been long in coming for many Americans. And whereas lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, intersex, asexual, plus citizens in our communities face discrimination simply for being who they are and for whom they love. And whereas while society at large is slowly recognizing new definitions of sexuality and gender, we must acknowledge that the need for education and awareness remains vital to end discrimination and prejudice. And whereas the city of Warrensburg is strengthened by and thrives upon the rich diversity of its residents, all of whom contribute to the vibrant character of our city. Through our Warrensburg Diversity and Inclusion Commission, we strive to embrace diversity and foster inclusion for all citizens. And whereas the city of Warrensburg recognizes the importance and contributions and members of the LGBTQIA+ community and encourages everyone to engage in dialogue to strengthen alliances, build acceptance, and advance equal rights for all. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Bruce D. Euler, Mayor of Warrensburg, Missouri, along with the Warrensburg City Council, do hereby proclaim the month of June 2025 as LGBTQIA+ Pride Month in the city of Warrensburg, Missouri. In witness whereof, I herein to set my hand and seal this ninth day of June. National Caribbean American Heritage Month, June 2025. Whereas in the 19th century, the United States of America attracted many Caribbeans who excelled in various professions such as craftsmen, scholars, teachers, preachers, doctors, inventors, comedians, politicians, poets, songwriters, and activists. And whereas Caribbean Americans have played an indelible role in many social and political movements, including the civil rights movement, adding to the strength and shaping American history, culture, and government with their leadership and achievements. And whereas on June 6th, 2006, President George W. Bush proclaimed the month of June as Caribbean American Heritage Month. And whereas although the population of the Caribbean Americans in our community is small, our city has a small, has a special place in the heart of the many people of foul-mouthed Jamaica. For more over 20 years, the members of the community have been building relationships with the Jamaican people through medical missions led by UCM Professor Emeritus Dr. Steve Mills. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Bruce D. Euler, Mayor of the city of Warrensburg, Missouri, along with the Warrensburg City Council, do hereby proclaim the month of 2025 as National Caribbean American Heritage Month and encourage all community members to celebrate and honor Caribbean Americans and their heritage. In witness whereof, I herein to set my hand and seal this ninth day of June. National Immigrant Heritage Month, June 2025 proclamation. Whereas the United States is a nation of immigrants who, with great bravery, left their homes, lives, and loved ones to seek a better future in the land that they've never been to. And whereas for centuries, immigrants from every part of the world brought energy and new ideas to shape our nation's identity and progress. And whereas immigrants have played an integral part in building American society, economy, and culture. And whereas they continue contributing to advancement in many areas such as business, science, art, education, government, and many more. And whereas in 2014, President Barack Obama proclaimed the month of June as National Immigrant Heritage Month to honor and recognize the contributions and diverse cultures of immigrants. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Bruce D. Euler, Mayor of the city of Warrensburg, Missouri, along with the Warrensburg City Council, do hereby proclaim the month of June 2025 as National Immigrant Heritage Month and encourage members of the community to learn more about the history of our nation's diverse and varied immigrant communities, reflect their own immigrant roots, and embrace the diversity that makes the nation stronger. In witness whereof, I herein to set my hand and seal this ninth day of June.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Item six point one, presentation of fiscal year 2024 annual comprehensive financial report in brief. Presented by Jessica. Thanks.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor, City Council. So it's my pleasure to present the city's first ever popular annual financial report, essentially the audit in brief, um, also known as a PAFR to you tonight. So as you know, each year, the city undergoes an independent audit of our financial statements. Um, this was presented to you at your last regular meeting, and we received this huge technical and very financially dense report known as the ACFR. This report is super important for accountability, transparency, and compliance, and it also provides valuable information um, to management about our financial position. However, this report is not user-friendly um, for the folks that we serve in the community that may not have an accounting or financial background. So therefore, um, GFOA um, encourages governments um, to create supplementary um, summary reports that are tailored to our residents to provide an overview of the key points from the ACFR. So that's what you have before you tonight in your packet. So again, this is based on the audit, um, but it's just kind of a supplement to go along with it. Um, so the first page um, explains the purpose of this report and the four categories of funds that we report on. So these are governmental, um, so this is our general fund, parks, CIP, kind of those general government operations sorts of funds. And then we have proprietary funds, which are also called enterprise funds. Um, so this is um, things like our sewer funds, now solid waste, um, but for this report, it's just the sewer because solid waste was added in fiscal year 25. We have fiduciary funds, which are our trusts and our agency funds, and then we have component units. So this is a legally separate entity, but is very significantly related to a primary government, so we also report on their finances, and for us, that is the WCBB. So then we have kind of just an overview of our um, form of government, um, and kind of a snapshot of where we were at the end of last year, just kind of some fun stats and things like that. Um, but I'll kind of dig into the, the financial portion of it, which is kind of the meat of it. So we begin with a revenue overview. Um, information following in this report is presented in terms of governmental and business-type activities. So governmental activities are your kind of primary city services, so public safety, transportation, um, those sorts of things. And then business type um, is our sewer. So again, those kind of proprietary um, sorts of funds. So that's how everything is presented in the ACFR, so I also present it here that way. So you can see a sales tax by far is our largest source of revenue on a S and Y basis, and then user fees or charges for service follows that. And then franchise fees and property tax are in a close um, tie for a third, but franchise fees ekes out property tax just a little bit. And then everything is kind of broken out in a table below that, so you can see the full categories and the amounts there. So for expenses, um, similar to revenue, I've highlighted some of those kind of largest categories, those main things that we spend our money on. The public safety, again, by and large, by and large, the largest expense that we have is the city. And then kind of infrastructure-based um, activities like transportation, sewer and parks, those are all some of our largest expenses too. Um, and then those are also broken out in a nice little table um, by the different categories down there below. And then our last page here talks about our net position, which is essentially the city's net worth. So there are a couple of things that make this up. The first is our net investment in our capital assets. So capital assets are things like buildings and our sewer plant and roads, um, and construction in progress and all that fun stuff. Um, and so the net investment in subtracts out things like depreciation and um, debt associated with those assets. So restricted funds are also part of our total kind of net worth. Restricted funds, as the name suggests, are restricted for a purpose like debt or other commitments and liabilities, um, things like that, so they're not free money um, for us to use. Um, the last portion of our net position is the unrestricted fund balances. So that's about $10.7 million for the city overall, and those are the only funds that we can use towards the city's needs. Um, in accordance with course law, um, the fund purpose and policies, including our policy to maintain a minimum reserve balance. So our net position was $85.2 million at the end of 2024, and it's increased year over year, which represents strong financial management on the city's part, so we can all give ourselves a pat on the back for that. Um, and then lastly, here we have our long-term obligations, i.e. our debt, which totals a little over $30 million for both the governmental and business-type activities. Um, and then you can see each of the outstanding balances of the issuances on the little table there. Um, generally, the geo-bonds and the COPs are going to be the governmental um, debt, and then the revenue bonds belong to the business-type activities. So that's kind of my quick run-through of the content that's in the PAFR, and it's going to be available on our website, along with the full ACFR, if people want to read it, that's available for them as well. So that'll be on the website for books to view, um, if they so choose. Um, thank you so much, and I'm happy to stand for any questions if you have them.
Well, uh, it's a, it's a great uh, brief that you put together. I think it's really informative, and it's kind of a snapshot, so it's really an easy read, as you said, instead of going through the whole, whole financial report, but thank you for doing that, looks really good. When does it go up on the internet? When do we?
I'm gonna try to get it up tomorrow.
Okay.
I'm gonna get up tomorrow and promote that as well, so.
I have a question, I'm sorry, did someone want to? It's a question about, this just occurred to me, and it's not an urgent question, but on um, page five, the financial overview, the revenue highlights, I'm just curious kind of how we stand as compared to other cities of our size related to the percentage of our income being sales tax and fees and franchise fees and property taxes or, or other sources of income, if we're kind of in line with other similar-sized communities?
Yeah, we've been working on that actually, kind of as a financial overview. In general, Missouri communities rely very heavily on sales tax because our ability to levy property taxes, of course, by the letters later, that's not necessarily out of line with other cities, but yeah, we can certainly kind of do a deeper dive in those more of our community uses.
Any other questions? Thank you, Jessica.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Yeah.
It's great to have such an easy-to-read document.
Item seven point one, an ordinance authorizing city manager.
Well, that's the one where. I apologize that, that we removed.
Oh, I'm sorry, that is, that's the one we amended. My apologies. It just happened, so. All right, skipping that, apologize. Seven point two, an ordinance authorizing the mayor and city clerk to sign updated services agreement for city attorney and city counselor of the city of Warrensburg, Missouri, presented by Michael Scragg, city manager.
I think I'm going to tell you a lot of things you already know, mayor and council, but um, we, the city of Warrensburg, for uh, an extended amount of time, received legal services from uh, Harris, Harris, um, Summer and Shaward. Um, and Doug Harris turned in his resignation to you effective December of last year. So Adam, uh, as part of the firm who had assisted Doug uh, for uh, in advance of that, has been serving in the interim role or the intervening five months um, since December. And then you may not be aware, it, Adam also serves as legal counsel for Clinton, Nobnester, Higginsville, and Leighton. And so uh, it was, th- this agreement that's before you just formalizes the employment agreement, Harris, Summer, and Card with Adam serving primary counsel, uh, other staff and his officer, uh, were able to assist him and serve as assistant prosecutor. I would note, if you look at our city code, it calls out a city attorney, which actually is kind of what we think of as the prosecutor, and a city counselor, which is more like a legal counselor, but I would think of as the city attorney. But also note that if you read the code, identifies uh, the officers that you appoint as the mayor and city council, and um, and then there really leaves the rest of the city manager. However, it's a pretty common for city attorney in particular, well, when I say city attorney, I guess city counselor in particular to answer to the, the elected officials rather than the city manager. Um, somewhat in a worst-case scenario, frankly, if you are at odds with the city manager and looking to discipline or terminate the city manager, you want the city counselor answering to you and not the city manager. So this agreement is uh, drafted uh, for your execution. Um, and then I would also note that that particular section of the code tasks the uh, city counselor with uh, kind of specified duties and anything else that is assigned or, or directed by the mayor and city council. So uh, this is a pretty standard agreement, uh, reasonable fees and spells out the, the uh, responsibilities and the services that, that um, Adam would be providing, and then provides for advanced notice of any changes in rates or any changes or termination of the agreement. So pretty standard um, way of approaching it, and it's for you, for your deliberation. Certainly want to give Adam an opportunity to address you any way that he might like. I don't want to speak for him, but I do know he's very committed to serving as our city attorney, and it's been obvious to me since I got here.
Do you have any questions?
No questions.
We have an ordinance in front of us then.
Motion to move to second reading by title only.
Kushner.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Latari.
Yes.
Euler.
Yes.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor and city clerk to sign updated services agreement for city attorney and city counselor of the city of Warrensburg, Missouri. This is for adoption or rejection. Kushner.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Latari.
Yes.
Euler.
Yes.
Thank you.
Item eight point one, a resolution of a council of the city of Warrensburg authorizing temporary closure of public sidewalks, parallel parking spaces, and parking lots necessitated by asbestos remediation and abatement and renovation and/or demolition of the structure located at 122 Hot Street, Warrensburg, presented by Mike Scragg, city manager.
As you probably know, uh, the, the county commission is actively working on renovating the courthouse. What may not be as newsworthy or, or apparent is they're also working on 122 Hou. And as I understand it, there was some water damage in it, they, they've made the determination the building needs to be demolished, they're proceeding in that manner. Uh, they've solicited bids, uh, pro- uh, first step is asbestos assay, assessment and remediation. So they've uh, solicited bids for remediation. Tracy Brantner reached out to me on behalf of the county, and we met with the uh, the consultant that they were using as related to asbestos, talked about kind of where there's mastic in the uh, brick and the facade, and maybe some on the roof, and just some need to do exterior work in terms of the abatement of that asbestos, which then uh, you know, with it being right to the property lines uh, in the sidewalk, uh, necessitate scaffolding and, and uh, just protection of public safety and perimeter of the building. So we did have quite a conversa- a detailed conversation about exactly what was needed and uh, working collaboratively and coordinating as much as we can to minimize the disruption um, by segments. And so the uh, asbestos consultant and this Brantner both were very receptive to sizing up the work that needed to be done. And so what you see in, in that diagram, it's kind of the entirety of areas that might be impacted, but not necessarily all at once, not necessarily for the entirety of the project. This resolution grants the authority to uh, block the sidewalk, block the parallel parking spaces in the street, and block portions of the parking lot as needed, and then empowers uh, the city manager to work out those details with the county as, as the project progresses. I would note as well, on the south end there in the parking lot, there is need for some staging of, of dumpster and equipment and things like that. So that portion that you see boxed out to the south, uh, is, is probably staging as much as it is asbestos remediation. And, and Tracy's here, um, I believe they initially opened bids and are intending to award them today, so she may be, be able to answer more detailed questions that you have, but. I believe the groundwork so we can keep up with the county and as they progress with this project.
Tracy, anything to add?
Yeah, I, I do want to add the, the shaded red areas in your di- diagram, um, we have uh, open bids with B and R uh, insulation, they were selected as of this morning uh, with the county commission, and so they have agreed in the first five to 10 days that that's the first thing that they're going to do, is that shaded area, um, exterior of the building, that northwest corner, um, and then the, the front part of the building, so that we can get that done and then move, move on to um, rest of the building. So happy to answer any questions if you have them. Thank you for the opportunity to be here.
I'm curious, what's the timeline on this?
Very quick, um, they, yeah. Yeah. So with a lot going on around the courthouse, as you might imagine, um, we've given the contractor um, no more than 30 days to get this done. So, and then there are penalties as a result of not getting that done, so.
Is it going to affect the farmer's market?
Um, I'm, I think the only thing that it will affect is the restroom facility.
Well.
And parking.
Oh, for the love of.
So.
The outhouse.
Yeah. Everything else is, I think, should be good, except for the parking. I think there are several people that do park behind that building and go to the farmer's market, but um, but yeah, that will be off limits, so.
But it, it's not going to cancel it out.
Oh, no, uh-uh, we've, we've given um, Jamie and her team, farmer's market team, we've given them plenty of notice. I think that um, we gave them notice like maybe 60 days ago that we would hopefully be, you know, moving towards this conversation. Yeah.
Thank you.
And I'm just curious, I feel like I should know this, but what, is anybody in particular used that parking lot? Is that designated for any particular?
Mostly veterans.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I would agree, yeah. And we have given them notice as well, neighbors know, building owners know, you know, what's, what's gonna transpire, so. We're kind of waiting for this evening to kind of get that final um, acknowledgement, and then we can take the diagram to the building owners and let them know that um, they're gonna be disrupted for just a little bit.
And Chief Jennings and Chief Musser, are you on board with this? All good?
Well, I need, I must confess, I didn't consult them, so.
No.
That's a good, that's a.
Yeah. Chief Jennings?
No concern.
Okay, thanks. Thank you, Tracy.
Thank you.
Move to approve said ordinance, second reading by title.
Uh, resolution?
Resolution.
Resolution, sorry.
Okay.
Move to approve resolution, this is presented.
Thank you, sir. Um, Kushner.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Latari.
Yes.
Euler.
Yes.
Thank you.
May oral appointments, recommendations. Nine point one, motion to approve mayoral recommendations for appointments. A, appoint Jessica Hackler as a member of the Children's Memorial Fund Advisory Board through June 2028. B, reappoint Joshua Green as director to the Parks and Recreation Board for a three-year term through June 2028. C, reappoint Jason Duffy, Claude Owen, as director for the Parks and Recreation Board for a three-year term through 2028, June 2028. D, reappoint Stephen Christ as director for the Parks and Recreation Board for a three-year term through June 2028. E, reappoint John Allen Kokumeli as a member of the Warrensburg Convention and Visitors Bureau for a three-year term through June 2028. Um, F, reappoint Diane Thompson as a member for the Warrensburg Convention and Visitors Bureau for a three-year term through June 2028. Item 10.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, we do need a motion.
Yeah, oh, motion to approve.
Motion to approve the uh, uh, appointments.
Kushner.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Latari.
Yes.
Euler.
Yes.
Thank you.
Appearances to the council, not, thank you, not listed on the agenda, we have no appearances. Item 11, miscellaneous manners from the mayor and/or city council. None for me.
Yep.
Okay. Twelve, city manager report.
I've got a handful of things for you. First and foremost, I've promised more of an explanation why item seven point one came off the agenda, so you may have discerned from uh, the attachments that were intended to go with the staff report. And there was some deliberation about galvanized uh, traffic light, traffic signal poles compared to black powder coated, and um, I, we were trying to bring that forward as a possible uh, price point and decision point for you, and the ordering of the poles is very time-sensitive in terms of lead time to get the poles, and then its impact on the rest of the work on the, on the, the corridor project. So we staffed that through quite a ways with the, the contractor and their, uh, actually their subcontractor, um, on the premise that it could be a last-minute change-out. If the powder-coated poles came in at the end of the project, um, the assumption, which I'll get to the errors in that assumption in a minute, but the assumption was that the existing traffic signal poles could stay in place and could be operational, and then there'd be a, a quick change-out. We knew that the poles were gonna change locations, um, and then we did a site walk last week, and that, that conversation kind of brought to a head the fact that the existing traffic signal poles are in the way of sidewalk work and ADA ramp work and, and some locations, so much so that it was, it was gonna be problematic and, and uh, extend the project, eh, create the need for concrete work in, in the winter and possibly extend the project beyond just the cost of that, of adding powder coating and adding contracting expense and adding um, possible extension of the contract and the, the cost that goes with that. So that's the reason, eh, kind of at the 11th hour, um, I punted on the possibility of powder coating, and we're just back to the original plan, which was galvanized uh, steel poles. So I'll stop there, I do have a couple of other things related to the wire and a few other things, but um, though, it'll, one make sure if there's any questions that relates to, you know, why that was on the agenda, why it came off, it was down to the wire and came to the realization it wasn't gonna work itself out in a timely way. No question. Okay. So on a related note, uh, also been having some conversations about the possibility of uh, decorative street lighting, and that, I've seen that done in other communities where uh, the community owns the lights, um, and the thinking is that. and the thinking is that you, you aren't paying Evergy a monthly rental rate and hopefully the savings you realize there may not pay for the entirety of owning and operating a lighting system, but might offset those costs. And so worked with the, the, uh, subcontractor once again, and Schneider Electric, who has reached out to us as a community, I have a working relationship with them from my prior community, just asked them to run the business case model in hopes of maybe getting to a price point that might be palatable. Um, they need, they weren't anywhere close to anything that was palatable, unfortunately. We did identify lights, we did identify kind of the configuration, the potential cost, but it, it was in the half million dollar range. And so, uh, that was something that I thought I might be able to bring forward, but it, that didn't pan out either. So, uh, just sharing that with you, kind of things that we're working behind the scenes to, as, as the Maguire projects, uh, evolving. So I did report to you on Thursday of last week that we walked the, the job site and looked at, looked at that. Um, and Evergy is ready to go and with what we're calling Phase One. They're gonna start working from the south, work their way north. And so Phase One is Grover to Market Street. Um, everything's in place. In fact, you might have noticed that some tree trimming has begun and that's Evergy's contractor that's doing the tree trimming work. Capital is then coordinating with them, uh, to do driveway accesses and work that they can do while they're kind of waiting on Evergy to progress through the corridor and then they can, uh, follow behind them working south to north. So we do have a handful of easements, uh, left to acquire in conversations with all the remaining property owners that don't have any reason for concern that it's problematic other than kind of answering their questions, figuring, reassuring them of, of their concerns and getting the details worked out. So, uh, that, that's been a lot of work. Joe Clifford in particular deserves a lot of credit for, uh, kind of being persistent on that. Um, you may have also noticed that there's some sidewalk, uh, concrete that's gone in on the north end. Um, I haven't really had a chance to, to check with, with Joe and I'm gonna call Phil out. It's his first day back from vacation, so he, he's trying to fill his bathtub back up with, uh.
He's always gone.
From the appearance of the concrete, I presume it's temporary. Um, that is not a, a finished, uh, surface, but I think there was work in, in that area that necessitated tearing it out and putting it back. And then there is some ongoing underground utility work still going on. We, uh, the conversation is week by week, they hope to be done and they're hitting some snags on the, primarily on the south end. But that's the other thing that's kind of interrupting the corridor at the moment. Once the underground utility works done, once Evergy, uh, starts their Phase One, I think, things will start to all place for capital and they can kind of work more smoothly. Can you stop there? See if you have any questions, but I have a couple more topics for you, uh, but I don't want to move on too quickly.
Could you say again, sorry, the Schneider? They did an evaluation specifically on some aspects of Maguire or?
Well, they, they ran the financial model of if we didn't rent the streetlights from Evergy for the Maguire corridor.
Gotcha.
And we own the streetlights and paid the electric bill, but also took on maintenance. Sometime, and I've seen that where, you know, the offsetting costs, um, don't necessarily balance each other out, but not having to pay the energy rental fee is, it's helpful in terms of being able to afford an alternative.
Yeah.
In this particular case, the, what we're looking at with spacing of lights and, and lights themselves, it just didn't close the gap enough for me to feel comfortable bringing it to you for your, you know, further consideration.
And that, that was specific for the, the Maguire corridor?
Yes, and now Schneider provides a number of other services and they, they will be presenting to you in the future about what they can do. They'll, they'll do an analysis on energy consumption, base use, they'll do a business model. Um, and there's a lot of opportunities for solar, LED light change outs, uh, energy efficiency that they, uh, feel like I'm gonna turn it into a salesman form, but they, they actually will put together a model that'll guarantee the performance and if it doesn't perform, they'll, they'll reimburse you.
Yeah, okay.
So it's, it's a definitely interesting conversation. It very much depends on, you know, your energy consumption and specifics of your, your system, but, um, they, they specialize in that.
Thank you. Thanks for reviewing that.
So the next thing I have for you is the Business 50 closure started today. Um, I shared some information with you previously about kind of a last minute decision on MoDOT's part. I think they came to the realization that there's just gonna be a lot of congestion with turn movements and lane closure and down the one lane and then people possibly trying to get in and out of Business 50 if they left it open. So they made the decision to close Business 50. They did assure me that they, they were gonna.
Close that for the.
The 50 Highway Project. And so they think it'll be closed till mid-September. Uh, and then the, the J-Turn project, uh, will extend into, uh, the December. I think December 1st is their target date. So we had some conversations about the detour signage. I went up today, I went and at, at the end of the day and sat and watched. And there are quite a few people that, uh, I, that passed the last detour sign and had to turn around in the middle of the road and turn back. And I do think that may be in part the, the verbiage of the detour sign and the location of the detour sign. You, you pass Main Street, which is your last opportunity to turn before you see that, that sign forewarning you of the closure. So I'll reach out to MoDOT and see if we can talk about, uh, kind of reconfiguring that. We've also had some conversation about supplementing their detour route with city detour signage within the community, uh, and trying to be strategic in terms of which streets we want to direct them down, so. Um, and there weren't a lot, uh, but there were a handful of people that obviously did not pick up on the detour till they're at the end of the line. They had to turn around. So we'll see if we can.
Haven't followed the Bird Facebook page.
No, yeah, but I, I can relate. There's a lot going on up here and I think you get in my habit and then think twice. Um, so then, uh, the MML elected officials training is this week. I'll be attending with Mayor Euler and Councilman Militari, uh, Thursday and Friday of this week. Then lastly, on a personal note, uh, this past week, my son moved to Warrensburg. Um, he finished his college sophomore year at K-State and next weekend I'll be moving my wife, my daughter and my stepdad to Warrensburg. So we're not completely moved out of sign, we'll still be commuting back and forth for various reasons, but we will have the family all under one roof again, so looking forward to that.
Welcome to our community.
Yeah, we're excited.
Glad to have you.
What is Mike? Thank you, appreciate it. Any questions? Twelve point two, city staff update, Administrative Services Department.
Hi, good evening. The only update I have for you all tonight is I just wanted to let you know that we are actively working with the State Auditor's Office as they are performing an audit of the closeout of Hawthorne TDD. So you may recall that in January, the board did abolish that district. Um, so the State Auditor's Office wants to audit the use of the excess funds that we received from the closeout of that TDD. So we received approximately $600,000 from that closeout. Uh, we have not yet spent any of those funds, so we imagine that this will be a pretty quick and easy audit, um, seeing as that's specifically what they're auditing is how we used the excess funds, which we have not. Um, and they, the State Auditor's Office did do an audit of the TDD last fall, which allowed us to then abolish it. Um, so the rest of the audit, or the rest of the TDD process has been audited already. So it's just the closeout that they're looking at. Um, so we'll keep you updated if anything comes out of that. I think it should be a relatively. Yes, so they assured us that they, um, audit the TDs all the time, so kind of a global process for them.
Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you. Item 12.3, city clerk.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. I, I put a report in the packet. I did want to point out, I've received news late last week from the Missouri Secretary of State's Local Records Bureau that, um, our state grant, as well as all, um, grant applications were turned down. Um, they are discontinuing, uh, temporarily the program for now. Um, and that was the only explanation we received. So at this time, I had applied for a one-time grant up to $15,000 that you all approved. And that will be put on hold. There may be some budget, budgeting items that I can shift around, um, which will come before you in the FY26 budget. But at this time, this project that was on the application, um, will be delayed or, or just postponed, hopefully, just postponed. That's all, um. Otherwise, it's day-to-day, uh, normal progress, normal work. I will be attending the Western Division Missouri City Clerk's meeting, regional meeting on June 18th. If there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
No, that's just disappointing to hear about.
It is disappointing. It is.
All right. Uh, city staff updates, item 12.4, community development, Barbara.
Well, we provided an update on both the code, uh, community development activity for the month of May, as well as solid waste numbers for May. And we see an uptick in overall trash collected and, um, tonnage of recycling collected and number of filthy waste items. Everything was up except for yard waste this month. Um, we would attribute that to the school year ending and more students moving in and out of, uh, dwelling units within our community. Um, and we'd also, uh, think that's why our house count is down slightly in May, uh, as of June 1st in that, uh, would just be accounts that went inactive because students maybe moved out in the summer. So be happy to answer any questions.
Have we gotten any feedback from, um, Green for Life, the, the Murph, the Materials Recovery Facility, where our recycling goes about what our percentage of trash is compared to what they normally might get this.
I've not heard any feedback on that. I talked to George last week, George Constable last week, um, and he didn't bring anything up along those lines. Um, but we just know that we continue to see some carts, not all, um, but a few here and there that are who have issues with them. While we continue to take action individually with those properties and having conversations with them, um, just want to let you know that continues to be a conversation we're having. And like, it's a huge issue at this point, but just, you know, we're, we're talking about it.
Just how does that work logistically when the, the driver, does the driver just make note of that address somehow? Do you know? I mean, I'm just curious how.
Yeah, that driver, um, it turns out there's ways to know if you've dumped trash and sort of recycling into the truck.
Yeah.
It smells or recycling doesn't smell. Uh, you, there are cameras in the hopper, they can see it coming in and.
Really?
It sounds different.
Yeah.
Than recycling sounds.
Yeah.
So they do have indicators and, uh, that, that has just happened. So they are able pretty accurately to know the address and report that to the supervisor and to our staff person poll. Uh, so our solid waste coordinator will have those conversations with them individually.
And so if someone sees that in their neighborhood, they could call the solid waste coordinator and let them know. Would that be appropriate?
They, they can. It, um, I, I don't know that they need to report on their neighbors.
Yes, right.
Uh, but certainly if they have concerns or questions, they can always call, uh, our solid waste coordinator call.
I think it's pretty impressive, recycling went to 66 tons this past month, um, which means it got diverted from landfill. So that's moving right along. It's fantastic. Any other questions from Barbara? Okay. City staff updates, Fire Department, Chief Jennings.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The, uh, May activity report for the fire department's in the packet. You had any specific questions? I can answer those. Uh, May, we did see a little, uh, slowdown in our call volume. Uh, until the last weekend in May, we made it four, they ran, uh, I think 23 calls in, uh, less than 20 hours, so. As you'll see the Sunday spike there, uh, that's where that came from. Uh, also wanted to, to let you all know, uh, in the capital improvement budget this year, we had budgeted some money for, uh, thermal imaging cameras. Uh, part of those were personal cameras, so they're about the size of a cell phone, a little bit thicker. Uh, we, we budgeted to get 14, which didn't quite outfit our seated positions, uh, to put them on everybody. So we came across a grand opportunity with Hero Fund USA that we applied for in January. Uh, last week, we were notified that we'll be receiving $7,442, uh, to go towards that purchase. So that'll get us up to 25 cameras.
That's great.
And he, each of those seated positions, so.
Awesome.
Good job.
They, uh, they, they want to come down, uh, when we get all that finalized to present the checks. Oh, we'll be good. Based on that.
Oh, great job. That's great.
Love hearing that grant money.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
City staff update. Parks and Recreation, hello, Chris.
Hello, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Well.
Good. Uh, good evening, Mayor and members of the council.
Um, provided a memo for you. As stated in the memo, it's part of our budget process for every fiscal year. Parks and Recreation Staff does present, uh, information. We presented a PowerPoint to all of our fees, of our fees and charges to the Park Board, the committees that we have, and also the Park Board. Um, we have done this in the past and the fees are important to have approved before the budget planning takes place so staff can bring forward a completed budget for approval. On May 28th, the Park Board approved the fees as listed in the, in the, uh, packet, your information packet. Some of the key, uh, points presented, uh, to the Park Board reveal that the facts of our fast-changing and increasing costs over the last few years and in order to achieve cost recovery and to continue to provide quality parks and recreation services to the community, necessary fee increases and policy changes were part of the proposal. And since I've been here, that has actually been incremental steps that we've taken. Each year, we have raised fees just a little bit, um, in order to match the market. Um, a few specific areas includes the increase in minimum wage. And over the past five years, uh, which is an increase of $5.55 an hour from 2020 and moving into 2026, uh, this is a 59% increase. And with over 100 part-time employees, um, and sometimes more in our budget of operations for programs, especially during the summer months, which is the outdoor pool, our largest program, Summer Day Camp, uh, which is a large impact on our expenses, um, as you can see for that type of an increase. Also, our summer food program, um, we provide meals for Summer Day Camp kids. Um, it's going up over $50,000, um, into this next year and actually is, um, going up to that right now. We do receive some reimbursement for, um, this program, but this increase includes, uh, that reimbursement. Another category is our debt service, which is for past capital improvements and repairs such as NASF upgrades that were made 2017 and other projects. The debt service set is set up with an increase in payment each year. So right now, we're paying around $270,000 annually, but by the year of 2033, it'll be over $430,000, so it keeps going up each and every year. With the fees increase review, it is important to point out that staff, we did an industry standard cost research, uh, for benchmarking. Now, in other words, we looked at other local community centers and other parks and recreation departments and either local businesses who offer similar services to provide a, a benchmark for similar costs. I know that the chart, the chart that you received on fees is a little bit small, so, um, I'll be able to answer any questions from there. But one of the important areas I wanted to point out is our community center chart. And that policy change is recommended for the reasons as stated, and that's the increase in cost that we have to operate our programs for not only community center and, but for park services. So for the community center, we completed a, a price policy comparison of 10 other community centers. That would be 11, including Warrensburg. And you will see that eight of the community centers are not free to the public. And Warrensburg Community Center is mostly free and the other two centers are partially free. One thing I did not, um, add in the memo, but it's important to point out, uh, Warrensburg Community Center was not always free, so fees have been charged in the past. Um, but it has changed over the years, not exactly sure why and what drove that, but, um, practice for a free rocking track, free gym and also free common lava and common areas of the center. But as you can see from the chart, it is not a common practice. So one of the proposed fees, an interest fee, um, is, is proposed to be charged for all who enter the community center, but there's going to be no increase in the amount of the fee entrance. In other words, right now it's $5 for youth and seniors and $7 for adults. That would remain the same. Also, um, this will not increase the fee for the monthly and the annual pass. In addition, um, the youth are going to be on what is called, uh, if they are on a reduced or free lunch program at the schools, there will be a 50% off on their monthly annual costs. So normally, just to give you an example, that would be $20 a month for a pass, uh, for a. uh for a youth uh that would be reduced down to ten dollars if they are on that program. Some of our participants come as much as four days a week. And just doing the math, if they came three days a week, that would be a little bit less than a dollar per visit. So we are expanding also the current scholarship program on sports, uh, which we currently do to membership program, uh, which will also help revenue. So staff is working on this process as well and more will be shared in our final budget. In closing, as stated in the memo, the fees adjustment falls under growth and investment segment of the city uh strategic plan. And as stated, this is just for uh your information this evening. But I'll be happy to answer any questions. More will be seen in the Parks Recreation Budget when it comes forward to you. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
I just I have a couple of questions, but first of all, thank you for all this work. This just this uh the spreadsheet alone is uh many, many, many hours. Thank you for that and for doing the the cost comparison. That was educational for me and I appreciate that because I didn't know that about the costs of similar and surrounding communities. So thank you. That's great to have. The only real question I have, well, two questions. First is, I'm just curious, the three-hour day pass, is that something that has existed already? Or is that gonna be a new thing as part of this budget?
Say that.
There's sorry, um, there's a, there's a regular day pass. And then there's one in here that says day pass, three hours.
Oh, I apologize. Um, we should have designated that basically those three, those three in that area, that's for for childcare. Um, a specific segment uh fee that we charge for those who come in and use the childcare at the same time. So that's separate from the regular daily.
Okay, okay.
That that is charged, yeah.
Okay, that makes sense, sure. And then just so I understand, um, students who at school qualify for free and reduced lunch will have a fifty percent automatic reduction in the cost of the summer day camp? Is that right or a different cost?
No, it would be a fifty percent charge on their membership to the community center.
Okay.
Um, so and that will be for the monthly and the annual. Um, one of the things is uh people make comparisons. If they if they charge five, come in and they go, it's five dollars if I pay the daily pass. Um, this is actually a way for us to grow the membership. And I will tell you that our membership is significantly low here as compared to other cities. We only have around seven hundred members.
Yeah.
Uh, town of uh Harrisville that I was in, ten thousand people, we had close to thirty-five hundred members. And one of the things that people look at, they go, well, I can pay five dollars a day or I can pay twenty dollars for the month. And if they're on the reduced food, only ten dollars for the month.
Yeah.
And so our membership will grow.
Yeah.
It's a positive thing, but it's also, and so it moves people to the membership um and building that membership, but it also gives them a significant reduced cost.
Yeah, that's great. That's very great. That's, I mean, I'm a member, a monthly member and happy to be there. It's it's totally worth it, more than worth it. So thank you for working with that population, especially that really needs a place to to go and hang out, so.
Yes, agreed.
The effective date for this then is that the fiscal year or?
Actually, actually, um, thank you for bringing that up. Because of the timing of how this will be approved, uh, park board will approve final budget, but then it comes back. Certainly, city manager will be seeing this as well as the uh mayor and council. And they vote on this um in um August and September. But our activity guide comes out the first of August. So these effective on fees will be coming into place on January one.
Okay.
Thanks for asking that. I meant to ask that too. Thank you.
Any other, any questions for Chris? Well, thanks, Chris.
Thank you for all that work.
Thank you very much. Yep. City staff updates, police department, Chief Musterman.
Evening, mayor and city council. Appreciate you having me. Want to start out this evening, um, the windows at the P D are not leaking. We've had a lot of uh have a lot of water. So I do believe that that should be fixed. Moving on onto that building now that we got that hopefully solved. Um, we're starting to look at the uh mortar and the bricks and stuff for sealing that, starting to look at maybe doing that in stages. But also there's uh caulking down along sidewalk, down along the edge of the building that is shrunk and there's larger gaps. So we're starting to look at doing some of that stuff in stages and um speaking with Aaron Schaefer, who works with the city uh for janitorial. We're just starting to look at some of that stuff on the building. But um we've been very busy at the P D besides building stuff in the last week and a half, two weeks. Um, it was approximately a week and a half, two weeks ago, we served one search warrant that led into arrest warrant, felony arrest warrant that we were able to seize over uh right around a pound of methamphetamine off streets. Um, that's a large uh, large investigation for Warrensburg. Uh, there was multiple other narcotics seized on that as well. Um, multiple people put into jail um on large bounds. Um, we had a felony domestic. Um, besides that case, we had a felony domestic that we were able to keep the individual under custody still to the stay with no bond. And then um investigators also worked a uh child uh kind of a child pornography case um through the ICAC uh system, and we were able to keep that individual under custody. He was a military individual. Um, and the military did uh want us to put that picture out there. We did a check with them before we did that. Um, and then we went from there. Last weekend, we had a uh individual who we had identified in the previous uh cases on shoplifting from Walmart, a large amount of uh items from Walmart. We sent him uh sums is in the mail. He ended up uh calling in pretty distraught and saying it wasn't him. Well, then Walmart identified him again um Friday evening to Saturday, early Saturday morning. Doing the same thing, we went up to identify him. Uh, he had left before our arrival. We saw a vehicle on Fifty Highway, went to make a traffic stop. Um, uh Lieutenant Jason Gilbert approached the vehicle, uh, reached out, grabbed a hold of the vehicle. The guy wasn't being cooperative. He took off drug Lieutenant Gilbert for a little ways, but he's fine. Um, we end up terminating pursuit after that. Uh, Independence P D um actually kicked it up. We had two more pursuits between Warrensburg and Independence, but then Independence ended up kicking it up and Independence shut down, they usually do. And then um that occurred then last weekend. Um, end of Friday until the weekend, we had a felony uh brandishing of firearm, had a business off Water Street. Um, we located uh the, an individual left on a bicycle. Um, we knew the individual's name, we were able to take him into custody today and seize the firearm firearm off street as well. And then tonight, before coming in, it was between three thirty, four o'clock. Uh, we did assist highway patrol uh with a individual pedestrian that was hit with the hit by the train west of town off one-on-one. So um our officers been very busy. Um, I can't thank the highway patrol, John's County Sheriff's Office enough for all their assistance with all these cases. Um, we've all worked seamlessly together. Um, and um one other thing, uh, we did have approximately a year, a little over a year ago. Um, y'all might remember the uh individual from Colorado. Her family was struck on Fifty Highway at Carlisle Van Lines. And uh, I believe three of the four individuals were deceased. Um, the individual who lived was a daughter and she came by and actually wanted to meet me and the officers today. And uh anyway, she uh she spoke with me and uh gave gave me a hug. And uh anyway, she moved within ten miles of Warrensburg and is working here locally. So she's very thankful and really appreciated all the officer's help, so. Um, that's all I have. Do I have any questions?
It has seemed like it's been busy just to me. It seemed like it's been a little extra busy and so I have no no clue how.
Yeah, there's a lot of information, so sorry, I'm trying to.
No, thank you.
I would have updates, but it kind of all just kind of happens daily. And so sometimes it doesn't, sometimes we have uh many weeks ago. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Appreciate it. City staff updates, Public Works Department. Phil Athlott, welcome back.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Uh, unfortunately, I don't have a whole lot to update. Uh, I know that most of the major projects are moving along. Uh, I do appreciate everybody's stepping up and the staff and management covering me while I was gone. So I guess.
Well-deserved vacation.
That was short, thank you.
And undersold, uh, the Public Works Department has been putting in exceptional work with getting these easements done and making sure that the core product moves along and have been keeping me and the city manager moving forward as well. So they're doing very good work.
Yep. City staff updates, Warrensburg Convention and Visits Bureau, welcome back to Warrensburg, Marcy. You've been gone, right?
I have been gone, um, yes. Good evening, mayor and council. Um, I did receive the Missouri Division of Tourism Educational Scholarship that allowed me to attend the Southeast Tourism Marketing College. Um, it's a three-year program. This is year two, one more year, and then I will be a certified tourism marketing professional. But uh, um, thank you. So I'm very excited. Program, I'm very grateful. The the scholarship covers my registration and my lodging during the conference. Now, travel to and from does not cover, so I hitch a ride in West Plains. And um it just cost me a tank of gas to West Plains. So I'm very grateful for the W C B B um and the city allowing me to participate in that program. It's a very really interesting uh program. We cover everything this year from Google Analytics four to branding, um, relationships, partnerships, you name it. And it's all different DMOs in the room together. There's about a hundred of us for a year two. So you've got Myrtle Beach and then you've got Perryville, you know? And so it's all different, different groups from different perspectives. And I really appreciate that opportunity to learn from that. Just want to touch, the week before I left, um, for Megan, um, we had a professional photographer come and do a photo shoot around Warrensburg. We went to eighteen different locations. That is such a feel-good. It is such a long day. We start the day at seven and we end at about ten o'clock each day. We hopped and we went everywhere and anywhere we possibly could. We did a lot of outdoor, we did a lot of restaurants, you name it. I think we went there, but it reminded me so much of everyone's patience and allowing me to do what we do. Um, from the owners at Freezy's for me standing at the window, for the to-go window at two o'clock in the afternoon. And she's looking at me and I'm looking at her and I'm like, can I come in? Uh, and then she put out, you know, made a whole arrangement for us to come in and get a display of the donuts. And it's just those people, like the Lewis family that came out to Sandstone and golfed one late night. Um, the restaurants making that all work for us to come in and and kind of take up an area. They allow us to do what we do and it's such a feel-good because left, um, the photographer left and as he was getting in his car at the U C M shooting range, she was like, this is a very cool place. She should be very proud to call this home. And I appreciate that. So I get to hear those things, I get to experience those things. And I just wanted to let you all know about that. So have a good night.
Thank you.
Any questions from Marcy?
When do we get to see the photos?
Hey, you know, but I was telling Mayor Euler, it's kind of a year-long process because we're coming in and we're getting these these photo images. We'll start using them next year for our spring, summer. But we did restaurants, we needed some really great food shots. And uh I just can't do it justice with my iPhone, I just can't. Um, and so uh Matt Wilson, and he lives in Washington, Missouri, he came up and he did it with our website being redesigned.
Right.
Our view, our visitor guide being redesigned. And then all the ads that we're gonna be doing for the grant that we received for sixty-five thousand, we're gonna be incorporating all of that. So you're gonna see, uh, for example, the photo shoot that we did last June. We're starting to see those, we're using that for this summer, this spring.
Yeah.
And so it's kind of a, quite a process, but you will be able to see them.
Yeah, great, thank you.
Thanks, Marcy. City staff updates, uh, community partner, big brother, big sister, first quarter, anyone here for that? No? I hate to say this, but it looks like we will adjourn. Thank you.